Yeah.
Like to thank everybody for coming out this evening. President Devaney is feeling a little under the weather tonight, so I'm gonna step in in his place. I'd like to invite everyone to stand and join us in the pledge, and we'll have Pastor Wilson here to give us a blessing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity together, together tonight. We ask that you be with us, that your spirit, your wisdom will guide us tonight. Let us do everything in accordance to your will, not in opposition to it, but in accordance to it. Be with us tonight, Lord. Bring focus to our minds, remove distractions. In your will, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Liz, if you'll do roll call, please.
I was Devaney. David King-Kate?
Here.
Daniel Brad?
Here.
Eric Gitter?
Here.
Levi Schrock?
Here.
Paul Stone?
Here.
Michael Gray. You did have a four.
Thank you. Todd, do we have additions? Do we need to add to the agenda this evening?
Yeah, Mr. Vice President, two other new business. One is a matter related to the project design and management for the proposed Muni Center project. And then, I have people on their new business in the solar concepts, security camera works for the new build-out, for the build-out renovation of the Cross Canyon. I think that's good. Let's let it go.
Okay, thank you. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from the August 19th meeting? Agenda. If there's no additions or corrections, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion with through the minutes from the April 16th, April 19th meeting as presented. You mean August?
August.
August, yes.
Second.
Okay, August.
Have a motion in a second to approve the minutes from August 19th. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes. We have a special presentation this evening, Banning Engineering, about our road inventory project. Go ahead and turn it over to them.
A plug into TV here so we can see. Councilman Pete, it's established, they call it, you engaged banning several months ago, right after the first year, to do an analysis of the road inventory, which roads, well, they're roads are small structures, signage, guardrails, all things road related. And so, we already have the stat, and that's that the committee and shares really high level, not one, granular information, high level, what those findings are, how we use this data to drive decisions, but assistance, and deployment of the pair and names of the property.
I'll just stop mirroring. Awesome. Yeah, well, thank you again. This has been a really cool project. Like Todd says, we've spent a good deal of time mapping, you know, merging with Adams Township. One of the big things was just getting to know what kind of assets were inherited with the merger. And the main, big things that we designed the map, consulting with Scott Kirby of the town, were the different storm structures, such as culvert pipes in sections, things like that, signage, as well as any guardrails that were out there. As you can see, this is kind of the comprehensive map you see here of everything that was collected. And as you can see, it was quite, quite the ordeal. Lots of miles traveled. As part of this project, we also updated the road, the town's roadway inventory through Endot. So there was quite a bit of mileage that was added to the town. And then, as part of that, we drove every road and did a Pacer rating, which a Pacer rating is essentially, how good is the road quality at this time? You know, we look at things such as different types of cracking, alligator cracking, transverse cracking, running, different sort of distresses that pavement might, might experience. And then assign that a certain rating, which then we will use to make decisions based on which roads need to be paved, what kind of treatments need to be applied to those roads, and so on. Also, as part of that, we also did some 360 Google camera street view imagery, which is found on Google Maps. So every road in town now has some sort of 360 road street view that is publicly available, which is a really good tool to have just for things such as, you know, roadway condition assessments over the years, just being able to see kind of what your roadway inventory and assets are from a visual standpoint. But the majority of our project was actually physically mapping all of these assets. So that meant going to each individual feature and putting a shot on them, gathering data such as pipe sizes, conditions, sign conditions, things like that. So like Todd said, I'll kind of do a high level overview, but this is the overall map here of all the different assets that were collected. If you, the way GIS works is all these different features have all different sorts of data attributed to them. So when you click on any one of these features, you're able to see kind of a comprehensive list of what was collected, depending on what kind of fields you have available. Each picture or each asset also has a picture assigned to it as well. So you'll be able to get kind of a nice way to take all of these images, all the inspection reports, PDFs, any sort of attachment, you'll be able to attach these directly to all these features. So again, like I said, we work, focused mainly on signage, culverts, and guardrails are the main three. And as you can imagine, most of your culverts are happening in more of the rural areas, and most, most of your signage is occurring more in the downtown portion of Sheridan. One thing that like Tom mentioned is the goal for this was to be able to use this for budgetary analysis for future projects. Community crossings is funding provided by the state that allows you to get money for roadway repairs. And the Pacer ratings that we were collecting are used to kind of really enforce what roads need to be addressed and what treatments need to be addressed from that funding source. That actually is going to be coming up here in October. So the plan is to kind of use this information to help narrow down what kind of project scope we want to use for this kind of funding in October. The other thing that we were able to do was, I'm gonna pull up an analysis map here. With all this data, we can kind of leverage the symbology, we can leverage the labeling to really kind of hone down on what are the areas we really need to be targeting. So one map we created for the town is a kind of a maintenance map of sorts, where we took basically any sort of identifiable distress from a sign or culvert and assigned it a value and kind of made those stick out as these are the ones that probably should be targeted. So with this budgetary analysis that we're hopefully going to be doing next, we're going to be taking a lot of this data and kind of assigning priorities of, you know, which, which signs in town need to be most addressed based on the quality of how they are, or, you know, where they're at located in the town, what culverts need to be repaired based on their condition, how, how critical to the roadway are they? Are they going under a major stream passage? Are they more of just like a little farm crossing? So these are all kind of the things we're going to be thinking about as we kind of do this next budgetary analysis, which will then allow Scott and his team to really kind of narrow down, you know, what, what are the key things we need to be targeting and how best to spend the money that we have available. But as you can see, this map, we've kind of isolated out these main kind of issues. So as you can see here, this is a sign that's probably in desperate need to repair. So using this kind of nice inventory map, you'll be able to really isolate and pinpoint those things very quickly and then be able to kind of create a budget based off of all of these assets. So we're really appreciative to partner with the town on this. It was a really fun project. You know, I think the guys out in the field had fun driving by some of the farms when the pigs would run up and, you know, wink at them and greet them. But it has been really cool to see this kind of evolve and just really give a holistic picture of what the town actually now has control over, especially with all the Adams Township features that have been brought in. So if nothing else, I know it's a little daunting to see that there's this many things, but this is kind of head and shoulders above what many communities have in terms of knowing what their assets are. And I think this is going to be a very valuable tool moving forward.
Pete, would you display and then kind of very quick explain the pavement rating and show the various colors, what they represent?
So this is the Pacer map. And again, Pacer, it's a way the state kind of assesses conditions of pavements based on certain criteria that is offered through the state. We took a training class to kind of understand what, what's more of a higher priority versus a lower priority. And a lot of this is based on kind of roadway distresses seen from the surface. So alligator cracking, for those that don't know what that is, if you look on the side of the road and it looks like this alligator's back, you know, little squares and kind of spider webbing, that means that there's typically probably some sort of base failure that's happening. Typically, that occurs, you know, when heavier traffic goes on it, when there's area where water pools together. Basically, it's kind of indicating that the base is failing and that's kind of a higher priority. So those typically get rated a lower level, whereas, you know, higher pavement that's been freshly done or more like minor distresses, like little cracks, those are kind of rated a higher rating typically in the six to 10 range. So what you're seeing here is depending on the color of the road, the more red you get, the more in need of probably repair or rehabilitation there is. And then, the higher you get to green, the more it's not in need as much. Now, it's a little deceiving because it looks like there's probably a lot of orange, but typically the average community is floating probably between like a four to a five and a half to a six of overall Pacer ratings. I believe you guys are, especially with the stuff that's been doing, happening in the downtown area as of the last probably 10 years or so, your guys' average Pacer rating is much on the higher end. And obviously, with the more, the rural roads typically have a little bit more stress because those probably were paved one time and haven't been touched since. So those are ones that even though they're rating maybe lower, things such as chip and seal or a minor overlay or more of a rehabilitation method, that's going to be suitable for those kind of roads since they don't get as much traffic out there. So just again, kind of a really nice visual just to see where are some roads that we should probably target sooner than later. And again, it's, it's kind of one of those things to help, it helps you be proactive rather than reactive. Very good. Any questions from the council or?
That's very cool. And this is accessible to everybody, isn't it, on the website?
So, yeah, so there's, there's ways. We talked to Scott and Jen a little bit about how we want to get this out. As of now, it's currently housed in the town's GIS account.
Okay.
There are ways to make this information public through means of a view only layer. Basically, what that means is anybody can see it, but nobody can edit it except if you have the password. So there's really easy ways to make this accessible, which is something that could be just embedded on for the town website and, or sent out an email or anything like that.
Sure. Very good.
Ask you a quick question. Yep. So there's been some discussion among the chief and the council about speed limits. True, does the sign assessment also include speed limit sign?
Yeah, so any sign, essentially, that was found on a town-owned road will be included in this inventory. The speed limit signs themselves, you can actually use different tools such as filters to actually narrow down where are the 45 mile per hour sign, where the 55 mile per hour sign. So if you, let's see. If you use the filter to kind of narrow down, each, each sign was kind of collected with, you know, what's on the sign, what color. So that 35 mile per hour, 45 mile per hour, that would be in a field that then you can sort and determine, you know, here's all our 45s, here's all our 35s. And what's cool about that is GIS is a powerful, powerful tool in the sense, once you have sort of that analysis done, you can then even take that data and apply it to the road segments themselves, and you can then make a Pacer map of sorts for your speed limits even. So you could say, okay, all of our red roads are 55, all of our green roads are 35. So there's lots of cool ways you can dig, take this data and make maps to suit whatever needs you have.
So as we mentioned our last week, this will help as we, as we budget, chip and seal as an example, Endot's available pricing, cost estimate, we can do one mile road for approximately $14,000. So for $140,000, we do 10%, roughly 10% of the rural district get buried by, we're able to do different levels of service under the localization. So this would be a very powerful tool as we, we just don't arbitrarily fix a road based upon the data that we collect.
Very good. Any questions? Questions for Pete?
Good, good, John.
Thank you. Alrighty. Moving on, consent agenda. Pay application number two for community crossings, Monon Trail Phase Two Pay Application Number Three and Veteran Strategies Engagement Letter. Any discussion on that?
I only have one question on that. The Veteran Strategies, Robert Vane, I haven't been a big part of this one, so I was just wondering if that's been good ROI and we've seen a lot from him.
I think he does quite a bit behind the scenes. I'm, Todd, if you, if you know or can express that a little more, I don't.
Yes, one to ask, I think more closely than it's President Devaney.
There's no further discussion. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in a second as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Old business, reorganization update.
Mr. Chair, I would just refer to, I have a quick suggestion, then skip over that to perhaps, I could be interrelated, but that, that could be decided.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-five eighteen facility.
Okay. Alrighty, we'll move on then and pick up that later. Item number two, ordinance number 2025-6, an ordinance submitting chapter 112 of the Code of Ordances for the Town of Sheridan, which is cable franchise fees. Second reading.
If you recall correctly at your last meeting, this amends the chapter one total effect of the code ordinance, what it ordinances to, let the 5% fee charged, operators within the town, that might say 3% the maximum allowed of the statute is 5%. Also, I do want to add, again, it's that in January of 26, that automatically goes down to 1%. Whatever it's set at, so.
If you don't increase it, we'll have 2%.
Zach, didn't we waive the second reading last time and just, did we approve this last time?
Something was.
I don't remember what it was. I do recall that now that you say that.
Yeah, just standing around.
So you just need signatures then tonight. Okay. This your garden.
It still looks good. I mean, it's a great resolution.
Better have it on there, not.
Yeah, yeah. Is there any other old business? Scene number, I'll move on to new business. Resolution number 2025-18, resolution of the Town of Sheridan approving revision of the road projects and authorizing amendment for the Dunbar Road Projects.
President, those of you, well, last meeting reported that we worked with President Devaney to send a letter of explanation to the county that related to, council, page request. There was the county council was surprised that there had been discussions for a long period of time and weren't aware of it. Even in the history, which we included, and then signed it very clear that the county council was not in favor of trails and would like to assist the votes on the road to avoid the trails if at all possible. I was encouraged to watch a meeting of the commissioners at which they, quite a bit of discussion and speculation as to the accuracy of the reflection of that letter of the council's will. So they asked that we adopt a resolution of the full council to express the council's commitment to taking trail out if it can be done. So that's what the resolution as report is for you. It also allows, I suspect, the next step, somebody will say, well, we're not going to do it unless we have an amendment to the interlocal agreement. So planning to that in advance, this resolution also allows the president to execute amendment to the interlocal, the cases required by the county.
I think we're all pretty much in favor of removing said trail.
Can I clarify one other thing? I put in the letter that, maybe a letter that I heard previously, that two of the councils voted against, were so committed against the trail that they voted against the project. I was informed by side that that may or may not have been the reason that there was a no vote on it. But so I just wanted to clarify, I didn't mean to disrepresent your no votes if that was not the case.
So President Devaney, since he is absent this evening, he did send me a statement that he would like for me to read in regards to this. So this is from the county, President Devaney. My apologies for missing tonight, but I'm under the weather and don't want to get anyone else sick. I have watched the Hamilton County Commissioners Meeting online and invite everyone to do the same. There were several profound statements made by the commissioners regarding Sheridan, and I would like to address. To set the record straight, Hamilton County Commissioners in January of 2025 approached Sheridan to enter into an interlocal agreement to rebuild Dunbar Road with federal dollars. Sheridan did not ask the county. Sheridan stated at the onset, we did not want the trail. During the Dunbar discussion, Sheridan did ask the county commissioners to complete the 236 Street project with federal dollars, but they refused. Sheridan offered to partner with the county on 236 Street by paying the matching dollars for the county. The county refused. The commissioners want you to think this is the first time they are ever hearing of this, the trail is not wanted. The town council has told them since January that we do not want the trail. Thanks to the collective efforts by the residents of Sheridan, particularly the Dunbar Road, you were able to apply enough pressure on the county to listen to what we have been saying from the start. Commissioner Airbrant states Sheridan is giving up 1.2 million to 1.5 million by giving up the trail. This was never Sheridan's money. Sheridan did not lose money. In fact, the county is paying approximately $300,000 less in matching funds by omitting the trail. Commissioner Dillinger stated that Sheridan has lost several millions of dollars of federal money to fix some of our roads over there. Sheridan did not lose money. The county chose not to do these road projects. The county is choosing to lose these dollars. The county can still do these projects, but refused to do them due to reorganization. Commissioner Airbrant says they are forward thinking by adding the trail and we are not, not by omitting it. Reorganization proves we are forward thinking. Someday, a trail might be needed to be built along Dunbar Road. It will be our choice and our design, one that is not intrusive to our residents. The council wants to work with the county officials. We would like to enter into an interlocal agreement for 236 Street. We have tried multiple times to work with them on this road. Hopefully, there will be a project in the near future that we can work together on for the betterment of our community and our county. And that is from President Devaney. If there is no further discussion on this, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move that resolution 2025-18 concerning the Dunbar Road Project be approved.
Sorry.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who's opposed? All is opposed. Passes. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash seventeen, resolution of the Town Council of Sheridan, Indiana, approving the declaratory resolution of the town's redevelopment commission, removing certain parcels from the Webster Economic Development Area and establishing the Griben Project Allocation Area and amending the economic development plan therefore.
Mr. President, it's been various calls, the Satori Project, the Griben Project, Griben is what we're stating.
Okay.
So as you recall, it was distributed about like two meetings ago, then you all approved a term sheet, perhaps this last week, you approved a term sheet that set forth the transaction with developer to issue a nine point eight billion dollar developer million dollars. It's not fair regarding nine point eight million dollar economic developments bond issue that is will be purchased by the developer that will be responsible for financing. The sole source of payment will be increment that's created in their increment allocation area. So you approved the term sheet. The advisory plan commission had a meeting last week at which time they approved the plan that is consistent with the conference plan or the plans for development of the town. For resolution is third step in the process, it approves the plan commission. This is what the statute requires. It approves approves the plan commission's findings. And then we have a couple of meetings scheduled to fulfill process on September twenty-third. We have tentatively scheduled an economic development commission meeting. I said tentatively because perhaps difficulty contacting September twenty-third works from five P M. And councillor Page, if you can make it on September twenty-three, we have a form. Sure. I'll do my best to contact Steve Martin. Maybe he's not on the road somewhere. That was a comedy joke.
Yeah.
And then there is a redevelopment commission meeting on the twenty-third at six P M. And I'll confirm with councillor Chairman Brad and his team tomorrow about their availability for that. If all that goes through on September twenty-third, then there will be one more meeting of the council on October seventh to approve the bond documents that the economic development commission will approve subject to your. Okay. So while that's kind of crazy process, it all focuses on the elected officials having veto with the board and these kind of things, which is a good thing. Just takes a lot of meetings to make it happen. And then if, so October seventh, the ordinance will be here for bonds and all that. You can adopt it on that night with unanimous consent. And that we ordered this did not, it will appear on your October twenty-first agenda for the final passage. And then we'll be closing in the next month after that prior to Thanksgiving. And Jacob Everett, yeah, who was here for the term sheet, been very, very good to work with because in contact with the developer. Excited about the growth of that project. So your resolution just approves the plan that was adopted by the R D C and the order of the advisory plan commission that that plan supports with the development plans for the town.
Any discussion on this?
I'm sorry, is this the entirety of the old Webster property project or subdivision there?
We actually talked about this last last time, so I do have a couple.
Like the the subsection there on the southeast corner?
Yeah, so so the larger one is the entirety of Webster allocation area, which I guess five parcels do. They are developing two of those of just east of West Street. And then one on the main net. So you can get it. So the two parcels are being removed from Webster and they put into a be free of allocation area. And the remaining three parcels will stay in the Webster area with no debt attached to them. So time blocks aren't running on those parcels.
Sure.
But no one's anxious to to jump in and develop.
If there's no further discussion, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion. We accept resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventeen as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and second as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Community center project design in management contract. TK Interiors. Shell, would you like to fill the rest of the council in on this?
This is an amended contract. Our first one, we didn't realize that the project was going to be as big as it is. And they've had several hours already into this project. So the base, basically it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. I've already paid over if the next invoice would go over my five thousand dollars that I can approve without council's approval. So we just did a new contract for all the services. This is a big project and they'll serve as the general contractor. So that way they can kind of be the go between between the council and the contractors.
At least completely make some minor revisions to the contract that are not on due descent like four o'clock and purpose when Michelle wants to. So we're a little tardy on that, but it's it's substantially the same. It was.
Some insurance language, maybe the town had yeah, additional insured and then some classical opinion of statutes.
Michelle, do you know, I know it's a big project. It requires a lot of planning ahead of time, but how much more above five thousand this is going to go?
We were estimating close to fifteen thousand, but we've added exterior landscaping and all that on too. So that's why we went ahead and the hundred and twenty-five. There's, like I said, they've had a lot of work already into this project and and I think we've got the big base of it. But I I can't give a dollar figure because I I have no idea. That's why we're going to do it in phases too. So.
That's helpful. I just didn't know if this was a ten thousand or like thirty thousand or.
No, no, I don't think it will go that that big.
That's helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We accept professional services agreement between TNT Enterprises. Doing business as TK Interiors and the town of Sher.
Second.
Have a motion and a second as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Thank you.
New Clerk's Office, Solar Concepts, window coverings and in a security camera quote. Let me get back to those. So Solar Concepts is the window films for the new Clerk's Office. This is the this is like the bulletproof covering. Is that correct, Liz? Making sure I'm following right thing here. Was for a total of four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. That is for front windows, doors, inner office, windows and doors, and walk-up office, windows and door. Discussion on this?
I'm not a professional at all on this, but I see Chief Nielsen's name all over these three estimates. I don't know if you have anything to add or not. Sorry to just summon you.
No, no problem. Mike Nielsen, Chief of Police, I was tasked with and asked by the clerk to look into what we could do to make the building safer. And I've done that. They are not bulletproof. I just want to make that very clear. They are shatter resistance, which means they will slow down a high caliber round, but they will still get penetrated, but they are not bulletproof. So I want to be very clear on that. The other thing that they do do is if for some reason you take a bat or a piece of iron or something to it, you cannot penetrate through those windows very easily at all. So it slows the people down from getting through that door. That was one of the things. The other thing is the security cameras that you're going to look at as well. And I'll go ahead and address those. I was tasked with making sure that we put security cameras in that building. I've done that. We've got the quote for you in front of you. It will connect those to our camera system, which we can monitor from the police department or from our any device that we have as well that we can get logged on. So that does increase the, not only the live view of that, but any data, if we need to go back and pull that data, if something happens in that building, we could do that as well. Entertain any questions for anybody? Thank you.
Thank you.
Or do it individually or?
You can do them, do them as a group if you want. Liz, I see there's two quotes. Are they exactly the same? It says quote one and quote two for the camera systems. They're both the same price. I'm assuming there's no change. I just want to be sure. Is that right, chief?
So there's two, there's two quotes. One is for the action cameras hardware equipment and that particular project. The other one is for ongoing support of that particular system. So they know exactly who to call. I do want to make sure that everybody understands too, there's actually going to be two network drops in that building. So two fiber lines are going to come into there. So we don't, there's no pointing fingers if it's an office line or problem or computer problem. We can keep those lines separate. So there are two T one lines coming into that particular building as well. But the other one is for ongoing.
Okay. I only see that both of them are for twenty.
It's in the folder.
Okay, never mind. Ignore me then. I'm just going by the email. Discussion on this? I like the camera ideas. I, you know, we have them currently in the town hall. I think that that's cameras are cheap security. I, I mean, kind of always have an eye idea of what's going on. Well, if there's no further discussion, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion. We accept the, I guess I'll break it into two. We accept the quote from Starkwise in the amount of twenty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars for cameras and support.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. As presented for the camera system. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
And then I will make a motion that we accept the quote from Solar Concepts in the amount of four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
I have a motion in a second as presented for the window coverings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Is there any other new business this evening? Okay, we'll move on to finance and budget update. Mr. Higgins, do you have anything for us?
No.
Okay, thank you. Legal?
I just, Mr. President, I've been paying most of my attention to the agreement transaction nicely. There's a legal preparation additional ordinances you can do all, including a heavy truck ordinance as requested and approachment ordinance, which is like curb cuts and similar items. And we do have to work out a couple of details on the heavy truck ordinance, including there's got to be, there's got to be signage that we have to work with DPW to coordinate with with county or maybe state highway, actually. He's also working on a few code enforcement items with Jen and her team. We do have a nineteen seventy-seven fund pension board disability hearing requests that we're working with chief on and the other big item on my calendar is trying to find a resolution that the county that mediation on arrive. That's where we are.
So Zach, the heavy truck ordinance, what is that just going to cover certain roads or how's that going to work?
The idea that that presented me would be two thirty-six, my correct on that one, from thirty-one all the way to all of
the point.
Here in town. You've got to have signage posted on intersections of both of those. So I can work with Jordan Kirby on it. Getting signage posted specifically on US thirty-one. If you don't want somebody.
Getting off. That's what I thought. I just wanted to be sure. I know our agricultural friends out in the community.
There will be exceptions in the ordinance.
Okay. Ag use. Okay. Yep. Very good. Just wanted to be sure. Alrighty. Good to the order for up here. Do I have anything to discuss? I have one thing here that Michelle has asked. They've kind of done a rebranding of our logo and kind of intermingled our old, old one and put a new one together. Looks very nice. I think there was some discussion about putting it on our new public works trucks that we've gotten. I think that looks very nice.
On a related note, if you file for and receive a bit of trademark protection for your current Sheridan sim which we can duplicate it with this one and then we're working with Jen on that one was for practice because it's all the pain over Secretary of State's office and getting these things. So Zach got that one through and then we're going to work on the Monon Trail, various Monon Trail ones also, those trademarked just in Indiana. They got to be in use usage first. So we got to get them on a website someplace. Actually, I think Monon will have a website. It's very difficult to find.
Michelle asked if we could just go ahead and approve this so they can get some things ordered. I know for a new tent that she's working on. Just to could I see it? Absolutely. Officially. Say we're okay with it.
Make sure the date been right.
Somebody wants to make a, make a motion to approve the.
I move that we approve the new logo for Sheridan.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the new Sheridan logo. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Anybody anything else up here? Seen none. I'll open it to public comment, non-agenda items. Please raise your hand. Invite you to come up. State your name.
Hi. Candy Ganzel, Dunbar Road. First, let me say that I think the county has found out that the residents of Sheridan and Dunbar do not give up. I really appreciate you authorizing the change in the interlocal with no walking path. Dunbar residents are thrilled with this result. We have worked very hard for this outcome. I am glad that David will be representing us at the Sheridan with the road project. The next thing we need to stay aware of is how much land the county thinks they need to take from us. As you know, the residents of Dunbar Road own to the middle of the road. There is no right of way or easement on our road. We want to give, give, we don't want to give up or sell any more land than we have to. You have found that out over the last few months. This is a twelve foot each lane plus three foot shoulder. This is a twelve foot each lane plus three foot shoulder for a total of fifteen feet on each side or thirty feet total. We need to appear at all public hearings and everybody and to make this well known, we would like this council to back us on this. Since Sheridan will be in charge of this road after this, they're in charge of it now and it'll be in charge of it for the rest of ever. There is no reason for the county to purchase any more land that is necessary, so we'll help you pet will. Um back us on that, because we could just see them trying to come in and say now that they're, because they're really ticked about this.
I'm sure.
I mean, I don't know if you've watched the council meeting on or the commissioner's meeting on Monday, but he was inconsiderate, rude, degrading of Sheridan. I mean, the man is just, it's unbelievable, no, it's not unbelievable, you can believe it from him, but anyway, it's just, it's sad. And he, the thing that will happen is he'll think he's gonna take thirty feet to say, look, I'm gonna do this too, so. We just need to be aware every public hearing there is in the council and I'm gonna thank the council tomorrow night because the county council actually listened and they were just like, what the heck, so thanks, guys.
Thank you. Harman?
Thank you, Council Parvind Gillama, Sheridan, and uh I just had two items, um and one before I forget, I just wanted to know uh because now that there is the. Uh now the Sheridan has expanded to the Adams Township limits, uh my my question is, do do you also then take over the uh the the. Uh the drainage ditches, you know, such as thistle wait and things like that, or does that stay with the county then at that point? Um the other question I have really it has to do with ordinances and we've been talking a lot about ordinances and I'm sure there's one already on the books about this, but. It's something my wife brought up and she's brought up if this up a few times and. I guess maybe the question is, how robust is our ordinance regarding people putting couches out on the sidewalk and on the street, because. There's been one sitting there at at second and and jerk water for or California for quite a long time and. I understand people want to get rid of it, some people misunderstand the heavy traffic trash pickup thing, but maybe we just may need to make the fine more robust. That really incentivizes people to do it, or maybe we contract with a company that just says. They'll pick it up and it's gonna cost you five hundred dollars, let's do that, so that's my question, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Oh, it's the county regulated, right, then it's they then surveyors from Purdue. So that that doesn't change if it's a part tile, that's that too would remain, that change would. Fall under the towns.
As far as the heavy furniture. It used to be, uh it hadn't been too long that you call.
Republic.
Our republic and they would send a truck out to get it for X amount of dollars, but I don't think it was that high. But they can't fix it in or fit it into their. Trucks they're using, but they would come pick them up.
I think you get one free, I've called before and had them pick stuff up, and I think you get one free item a month or something like that, that they'll come and pick up, so.
As a personal user of this service very recently, uh Republican informed us that we would be able to use that service for free once per year.
Okay.
For one item, items they won't take are compressible and expandable foams like mattresses. Um your sofa may or may not be eligible for pickup based on cushions, I'm not saying you can hide those in your trash cans, I'm just saying. Uh but that was my, that was my direct um experience with it was once per year.
It is. Part of this, it's been there for a duration, staff reaches out to whoever that. Land of Renz, great city and find the status.
Yeah.
All under the drinking.
Mm hmm.
If we have such.
Sir.
Yeah, my name is Jeff Beals, I'm at two one six four five Dunbar Road, uh just want to thank you for supporting us on this uh no. Walking multi-use path, secondly, now that we're part of Sheridan out here in the outlying areas. Are we gonna be included with your trash service?
I don't know, we've not really renegotiated that yet, but.
Well, I didn't really think you could answer that tonight, but that was something that when you started talking about kind of popped in my mind. Because we all have our own independent own carriers right now and and last um. Some of us are not the best in hearing, so we have a hard time hearing y'all over here because you don't have any microphones. And then I would also ask it, everybody here leaning to your microphones so that some of the older people. Not me included, but some of the older people can hear you better, because we would like to uh. Fully hear everything you say, I mean, in all due respect, we'd just like to hear what you say, so that would be something consideration, thank you.
Absolutely, that's true. Anyone else?
Vance Wallace, nine oh six South Georgia Street, uh first I want to comment on the street department's day. They worked on Georgia Street cleaning up where the weeds are growing between the curb and the. Backtop and I just want to comment, I've never seen that done and I appreciate it. I'm having to do a lot of traveling lately and I've been, did something the other day. I was down in Worston Township and the thistles was growing across the road. So. I thought there was a state wall on thistles. I called Hunter Smith's office, I called Senator Buck's office. And I think both of them aides think I was a nut and um and probably wasn't that that day because I was very pissed off. But anyway. Hunter Smith calling back and told me this. The state does not have a control, but it's up to the townships. And I will comment, Michelle, because uh she had done that before. So I was discussing this down the region about this, being a, I was being a nut and I agree, I get off for times. And one of the people down there said, why don't you drive down two thirty six and see there were mong or whatever guys company. Two hundred and some acres of weeds. Why don't we make a mullet? We, it's a shame that a developer can buy a piece of land. And let it go up in weeds. You can't do that in town. We have an ownership hat to mold the yards, I know trustee has enforced this before on the corner of Wamong. And thirty eight southeast corner, which needs to be molded again. But can't we make a developer do the same thing? It's that whole two hundred and some acres down there is six foot weeds. Can't we make a developer do the same thing? I don't know, but.
The Melchon Farm two twenty six.
Nelson Farm, it's it's two hundred and whatever the whatever he's bought, the developers bought, it's nothing but weeds.
Look at that, send it to trouble of an arm.
Yes.
Yep.
Hello.
Maybe we can send them an encouraging letter. The Department of Administration has all the powers of the government trustee which you control.
And then one item on the agenda which I'm not, this. Weight limit on different roads, can we add White Avenue? Because there is a lot of heavy, this summer we've had a lot of. Concrete trucks on White Avenue, um it would be nice maybe if we include all city streets. We have got some streets has twenty eight thousand pounds. Could we include all? Central streets with a weight limit. Um if you're gonna work on this paperwork, maybe we can just add a few more words. Because White Avenue is horrible to begin with and.
I think it is post advance, White Avenue is.
I don't see a sign.
There used to be one at least.
There it is, I'm pretty sure.
It is. I think we researched that important.
There's no ordinance, okay, so there is a sign, but.
Yes, yes, you know, just include the whole town. And thank you, but I am, I do get kind of carried away at times. It's all right. And I've asked people to come, now I wonder what was your reason?
Anyone else? Okay. Make have a count action to pay accounts payable vouchers.
I'll make a motion, we pay the account payable vouchers.
Have a motion in a second to pay accounts payable vouchers, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes. Um our upcoming meetings, uh town council be Tuesday, September sixteenth, six o'clock. Uh other boards, um Director Miller wanted to be sure that I let everyone know that the B Z A and the A P C meetings had not been canceled. Uh they will be meeting on September eighteenth, B Z A at five thirty, A P C at six thirty. Then the R D C will also be meeting September twenty third at six o'clock, all those meetings will be held here.
It appears that the E D C will be on that twenty third.
Okay. Alrighty. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion. Second.
Have a motion in a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, thank you for coming out, appreciate it.